When we have Student Citizen of the Month and we're so grateful for each of you coming and supporting our students. Today, November 16th, I'm just gonna slide through here. We just want to mention that our highlighted pillar of the month, many of you in your schools use the pillars of character and we have them along the wall here. This month's pillar that we're highlighting in the town is citizenship. We have two amazing sponsors. And so in the packet that the students will receive tonight is a coupon for Sal's Gilbert Pizza who supports just about every community and school event that we have in the town of Gilbert. Great community partners for us. And Sub-Zero Ice Cream owned by the Vander Mollens. That's where science and ice cream meet. Nothing can go wrong there, right? So we're grateful for both of those sponsors. Tonight, we need to do one extra special thing. You look like you could help me. Are you willing to help me? Do you mind coming? Nope. How about your big sister? Can I get your big sister to help me? Maybe you guys could come together. Nope, she's good. She's in good hands over there. What's your name?
Madeline.
Madeline, thanks for being here tonight. I have the names of all of the teachers who submitted the Student Citizens of the Month tonight because it's kind of a little bit of work. They have to fill out some forms and tell us some cool things and we want to make sure those teachers get recognized. So any teacher that submits a Student Citizen of the Month has a chance to win a $25 Frost Gelato gift card, which is pretty cool, don't you think? Awesome. Will you pick the teacher's name? No pressure. If you don't pick your own, I'm sure she'll still love you. He or she will still love you. Lots of male teachers. Oh, sure enough, Dr. Harmon from Highland High School. Is Dr. Harmon here? Dr. Harmon, awesome. Come on down. No, you get it. She's trying to give it away. She's so sweet. That's very kind of you. It's for you. Thank you for your help and for participating in this great opportunity for us as a community. We do this really quickly and efficiently and there's plenty of opportunities for photos for all of you as well because we know you're here to take pictures of your kids. So we do this in groups. Group one is all of our elementary schools, A through J. It's really A through I. Ashland Ranch Elementary, all the way down to Islands Elementary, that's group one. So if you go to one of those schools and you are a Student Citizen, will you come on Go stand by Councilmember Ray. And while they're coming down, very important for me to note, in Gilbert, we work as a team and I have the best team. I have Vice Mayor Peterson, who will be reading the names. I have Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Cook is wearing his Gilbert Days hat. We have Councilmember Taylor, Councilmember Bridget Peterson, and Councilmember Jordan Also, we want to take a quick moment because if there are teachers or educators or administrators here, we know that this probably wasn't in your job description. But we want you to stand so that we can recognize you. Or if you're already standing, you gave your seat to a family, raise your hand so that we can make sure we recognize you tonight. We know how hard you work. Thank you so much for everything that you're doing in the community. And with that, we will go ahead and start group one. We just want to let you know that Lauren from our digital team here is taking professional pictures and those will be available on Facebook and Flickr. And so you're welcome to download those. But when your child comes up, if you want to come to this area, that would be the best spot to come get a photo. So I think I covered everything. That was all of the details of tonight. All right. So the first student, when they get called, you have to show everybody else how to do this, okay? All right.
All right. So keep in mind, I will do my best to pronounce your name correctly, but if you don't like the way I said it, you can tell me and I will try again, okay? All right. So here we go. Also from Traditional, sorry, Chandler Traditional Academy, Emily Scott.
Okay, that was wonderful. Thank you, Group One, for showing us all how to do that. We also know it's a school night, so if Group One does have to leave, we're not offended. And it does open up some seats for other people who are standing. So we'll invite Group Two down and I think there'll be a little shuffle in the room and then we'll start again. Come on down, Group Two.
From Patterson Elementary, Ella Green. From Pioneer Elementary, Spencer Gilliland. From Playa del Rey Elementary, Alexis Garcia. Okay, there's two pronunciations I've heard on this one, so bear with me. From Santana Elementary, Maya Zamora. Could be Mia. Mia Zamora. Okay, I'm gonna go for the German pronunciation may not be the preferred one. We'll see how this goes. From Val Vista Lakes Elementary, Aurora Filek.
I feel like sometimes you get to see how short your mayor really is when I stand next to some of these elementary school kids. This group's even worse, so bring up your junior high and high school students. They're all taller than me.
I never really think I'm that short until I stand by the fifth grade. Aw, you're welcome. I'm so glad. Thank you. The left side's arguing with the right side. That's what's going on.
All right. From Canyon Valley High School, Paul Duet. All right, I'm gonna go with the double L's and what I think they mean. We'll see what happens. Also from Mosquito High School, Jimmy Bellamonte. It was actually Belmonte. Oh, well.
That does conclude our Student Citizen of the Month portion of our meeting today and we will start the business of our meeting in about two minutes. Thanks for coming and have a happy Thanksgiving. have a happy Thanksgiving.
There you go. I know, you're photo bombing the map.
Hey Scott.
Yeah, I'm not sure my bank app actually allows you to take a picture of a check that big, so that'd be kinda cool. Thank you to that entire team. On behalf of the entire Gilbert Town Council, the work that you're doing is making a difference, and it takes so many good people coming together, as Vice Mayor Peterson indicated. And I just wanna also express my sincere gratitude to Vice Mayor Peterson for all of his work on this project. He puts so many hours, personal time, personal resources behind this effort, and it makes a remarkable difference for this committee. And so, Vice Mayor, we're grateful for you.
We will now move to the consent calendar. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I'm only aware of one item requested to be pulled. That's Item 8. And are there any other items? Now, seeing none, Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion if that's an order. Mayor, I move to approve Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17. Excuse me, Vice Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Item 1 has been removed. Staff removed. Item 1. Where is that note? Oh, I apologize. Okay. Pardon me, Mayor. I scratched the motion with Item 1 included. I'll remove that from my motion.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. I wanted to make a quick comment on Agenda Item 10. We have a great group in the audience tonight celebrating, hopefully, the passage of Agenda Item 10. A remarkable contribution is being made to the town in our Operation Welcome Home Veterans Park, and I'm grateful for each of you and for your continued contributions to Gilbert. It's a work of passion, and I am sincerely grateful.
...of every good gift. So we thank you for the privilege of residing in this great town that provides abundant opportunity and meaningful relationships to us all. God, we thank you for the peace, Lord, for the safety, and the respect we enjoy here. And we ask for your continued blessing, God, on the residents, public servants, businesses, and leaders. Please give this council your perspective, Lord, your insight, and your wisdom as they make important decisions that will impact generations to come. We desire to continue to live and love and serve in a way that honors and glorifies you, oh Lord. So please help us. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Velvet. We appreciate all the contributions that Evident Life makes to our community. I will just move one agenda item forward tonight, and that is special events. And this weekend is Gilbert Days. It's our Gilbert Days Parade on Saturday morning in our Heritage District along Gilbert Road. It's also the Shun the Sun Gilbert Marathon. And that means that there will be road closures all over Gilbert on Saturday morning. We want to make sure that the public is aware, so we've left a lot of information on our website as far as the map and where you can find that information and which streets to avoid, maybe create a new path. Planning ahead is going to be critical for everyone in Gilbert on Saturday morning, so we would encourage you to visit our website. Also, all of our social media channels for the town have information about the road closures. And we're grateful that Councilmember Eddie Cook wore his hat tonight to celebrate Gilbert Days. Thank you, Councilmember. The Clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Victor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you, Lisa. At this time, we'll do communications from citizens, but I don't see any requests to speak this evening. Okay, that will move us to the consent calendar. And I look -- yes, thank you. I knew I was missing something. Thank you. Vice Mayor keeps me on track. It's awesome to have a good Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor Peterson, will you please assist us in a presentation?
Thanks, Mayor, I will.
I didn't mean to forget you. You're very important. Thank you.
There's a slide with our sponsors. Is Heather here? Is she here? Do you know where that is? What's in there? No, I don't see it there. Shoot. Hey. Make it. Well, we can talk about them. Come on up here, Tim. And Fran, where is Fran? Did she disappear? Come up here, Fran. Okay, so we're here to talk about I Run for Good 2017. We have a committee for our city Gilbert has been -- we were actually just reminiscing today. We've been together working to benefit those in our community, those who are in need, for six years. And I was telling them, I was sitting around talking to them, and you know, I'd go to meetings, especially that first year, just wondering if people keep showing up every month, and I have no idea why they're there, to help me. They keep helping me, and I can't figure out why they're doing that. So I cannot express my gratitude enough to these individuals for all the help that they've given over the years. And not a penny of anything that we raise goes to anybody's salaries because nobody has any. They're all just volunteers. And it's really amazing. It's amazing what they give and the hours they contribute. So we had an identified task this last year, and that was to address the epidemic of substance abuse. In particular, we wanted to do something about youth substance abuse. A lot of people do not know, but accidental overdose is actually the number one cause of accidental death in the U.S. That's more than traffic accidents. A lot of people don't realize it really is an epidemic. And so we heard those statistics, and we know the need, and so we went after that. So this last year, we got all of our sponsors from last year, almost all of them repeat-sponsored. We had more sponsors than ever. I had a really nice slide showing all of them. Trust me, there were a ton. You know, things from our presenting sponsor being Dignity Health, again, we're so grateful to them, but all the way down to the local golf course. Greenfield Lakes Golf Club loaned us a golf cart for the day. And it was just those kinds of things. We had a construction company loan us barricades and things for things we needed. And so we just had so many people come together. And the long and short of it is, we -- our committee, our committee raised $12,000 that will go into the Neighbor to Neighbor Fund to benefit that cause. So we're just so grateful. Anyway, I've rambled on a little bit. I wanted to give a chance to Fran and Tim if they wanted to say a few words.
I'm first. I love Gilbert, and I love the people, and I love the support. It was so fun seeing families. We need to see more families out there supporting this worthwhile cause. But it was fun to see these runners, these families, supporting this great cause. Our goal was to be able to donate more, which we did from last year, and we're going to keep doing that and supporting Gilbert. So thank you.
So Mayor Daniels, it's with great honor and privilege that we present a check of $12,000 to the town of Gilbert for the combating of youth substance abuse. And behind these dollars are hundreds, if not thousands, of hours of volunteers that have made meaningful connections in our community. And we are here to not only present funds, but also the goodwill that goes behind all of this to combat substance abuse. And so to the town of Gilbert, better days are ahead. Take a picture again.
Yeah, I'm not sure my bank app actually allows you to take a picture of a check that big, so that'd be kind of cool. Thank you to that entire team. On behalf of the entire Gilbert Town Council, the work that you're doing is making a difference. And it takes so many good people coming together, as Vice Mayor Peterson indicated. And I just want to also express my sincere gratitude to Vice Mayor Peterson for all of his work on this project. He put so many hours, personal time, personal resources behind this effort, and it makes a remarkable difference for this committee. And so, Vice Mayor, we're grateful for you. We will now move to the consent calendar. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I'm only aware of one item requested to be pulled. That's Item 8. And are there any other items? Now, seeing none, Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion if that's an order. Mayor, I move to approve Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Agenda Item 1 has been removed. Staff removed Agenda Item 1.
Where is that note?
I didn't see it either.
Oh, I apologize. Okay. Pardon me, Mayor. I scratched the motion with Item 1 included. I'll remove that from my motion.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. I wanted to make a quick comment on Agenda Item 10. We have a great group in the audience tonight celebrating hopefully the passage of Agenda Item 10. Remarkable action is being made to the town in our Operation Welcome Home Veterans Park, and I'm grateful for each of you and for your continued contributions to Gilbert. It's a happy life, I know, and a work of passion, and I am sincerely grateful. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, I won't be long on this. I was studying the rates in this, and I just, I can't make sense of them. And so if I was asked by a taxpayer to justify them, I couldn't. And that doesn't mean they're wrong, but in the homework I did, and I did some homework on it comparing to rates as I understand them, we do bids in the commercial sphere as well. So it's, I just, I don't know how to make sense of it at this point. So I'm not ready to approve it tonight. I'm sure it'll pass, and I'm going to do some more homework on this kind of item for the future, but just wanted to vote on it separate, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there a motion?
Mayor moves to approve Item Number 8.
Is there a second? Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. Move to our public hearing items. Are there any requests from the council on public hearing items this evening? Okay. Any requests from the public?
Mayor, we had a request on Item 21. We have a request, oh, actually, not to speak, but they wanted to be in the record, on the record, for being in favor of the item. And I'll submit the name to the Clerk for the record.
Thank you.
Mayor, I do have one question on 21.
Okay.
And I don't know who the staff person is.
Just a second. I have an open public hearing, but I think Councilmember Cook has --
And I would like to make a comment on Agenda Item 20.
20? Okay. Items 18 and 19 and 22. Items 18 and 19, and entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item 20. And just as a quick note, Agenda Item 20 does have an emergency clause in that which requires a supermajority of the council in order to pass. I just wanted to make sure. Councilmember Cook.
Hawkins, can you just give us a little overview of what this is about? Because this is one of those times where smart, good business sense really pays off. And a lot of this is also the benefit of our AAA bond ratings. And again, as we all know, we have secured two AAA bond ratings with the three financial institutions that rank us. And that's really on how the town of Gilbert runs our business extremely efficiently. And so Hawkins, if you can just share a little bit about what this is, and I just want to make a comment to review the historical benefits of what we've done as a team as relates to taxpayer dollars saved over the time that we began this practice.
Thank you, Councilmember Cook, Mayor, Council, Hawkins-Hanson Financial Director. Not on a regular basis, but when it comes up, is watching out for what our municipal bonds are doing in the market, what the markets are doing, and opportunities to refinance those. And right now, we have an excellent opportunity to refinance the bonds that we issued in 2009. The market rate that we anticipate to be able to borrow at is extremely low, to the tune of being able to refinance that and save approximately 15% of the principal outstanding, which is really an amazing opportunity for the taxpayers of Gilbert, for the development fees, and for the general fund as well. And then in addition to that, an opportunity to use bond funding to build, let growth pay for growth, and build that final fire station as well.
So just a quick comment. So when we began the practice in fiscal year 2012, and if you add, again, we can't get an exact answer because we have to wait till after this particular one goes through. But the fantastic part about this is that if you sum up the tax dollars that are saved because of the refinancing and the interest that we're not paying, that number is going to be close to $22 million that the taxpayers are not going to need to pay because of smart business, you know, practices. And I just want to say, round of applause to the financial team and the budget team for doing this, and it's just fantastic. I know we talk about, you know, how we tweak, you know, percentages of tax rates and all that. This is very significant to our community. And again, I ask again, my hat's off to the team. And on behalf of the citizens and the business folks here, I will do that. We want to thank, you know, our team for doing that. So I think it's a round of applause, lots of whistling here and all that, so.
Thanks.
I wanted to say, this isn't also just a game of shuffling, a game where we're just reducing the rate. It's also reducing principal. And so from all angles, this is a fiscally conservative and prudent move, and I just, I think it's great. So thanks again for that.
Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, and again, I echo that. I'm not going to repeat any of that. But because it's good, I think we need to make sure that we continue with these types of deals and not other deals like St. Xavier that were bonded and there's debt, or there's debt doing maintenance work, right? So it's really important that we focus on the A playing debt plays like this that really value, return value to the taxpayers versus other things that we've used debt for that really don't. They're gambling with the taxpayer's money. Xavier, unfortunately, is a bummer of a deal. And so while we celebrate, we need to celebrate on these types of things, we also need to continue to learn and make sure that we have the headroom with other, for things like this, and we don't use it up on other things, because there's other things in the CIP that are targeted for debt that are not as good of ROI or are much more risky than this. So anyways, want to just make sure that we see this as a great example and continue to focus here versus other things that we may have done. So thank you, Hawkins, for the great work. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And Kelly, since you're part of this team, and you hide behind the scenes a lot, but you're doing a tremendous amount, will you please stand so that we could recognize you Kelly and Hawkins and all the individuals who work as part of your teams, thank you for your leadership. With that, I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item 20 and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would like to move that we approve Agenda Item 20.
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item 21.
Just a quick question. Is there, are there any businesses or anyone who've put in applications that will be affected by this? So anyone in the process that this will potentially affect? And how are we going to deal with those, assuming they applied prior to this passing, assuming it passes?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. It's a pleasure to serve the city of Gilbert. Lynda Edwards, Planning Manager. So yes, Councilmember Ray, we have had a recent project come forward to build in the multifamily low area. He started through the process and needed to have variances. And as we saw progress on this zoning text amendment, we worked with them and told them if they can just hold off about 30 days, we'll refund their money and come back with the project if this project approves. So that's the plan for that developer. And then we also have another project that's moving forward, and they have gone through pre-application, and we are reviewing their project now. They have designed it to meet these standards. So they're hoping that there is support for these standards, and they're ready to move forward.
So neither one of those applicants is going to come back, assuming this is approved, and ask to be in the previous standards? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Any other questions from council? All right. With that, I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item 21 and entertain a motion. Vice Mayor.
I just want to thank staff for their work on this. This is the kind of thing where I think we're opening up for more opportunities for innovation in the market, and a good time, really a great time to do that. We've got so many, so much life in the Heritage District. To give more opportunity to make the most of that energy and do some innovative things is really great. So just want to thank staff for that, bringing these things forward.
Thank you.
Mayor, are you ready for your motion?
Please.
Move to approve 21, as printed in the public agendas.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to our administrative items. Are there any boards, commissions, or committee reports from the council? Councilmember.
Mayor Daniels.
Yes.
Do you need to vote to continue Item 22?
We did that as part of the original vote. Okay, we will continue that. We will open the public, we don't have to open the public hearing. We can just accept a motion to continue.
I move to continue Item 22 to December 22, 2017.
Second.
24, excuse me.
Please vote.
It was the number 22, sorry.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote as well. Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. Councilmember Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things here. At the Parks and Recs Board meeting this week, I was pleasantly surprised of two members of our staff, which we will see at a future council meeting. We presented them with recognition of saving one of our citizens' lives at the rec center. And that happened on October 30. And because we supply these AED devices at many of our public facilities, they took advantage of that with their CPR training. And from what I understand, our paramedic team says that the odds of an individual recovering are very slim in these particular cases. So we'll see those two individuals come here, and I just wanted to share that publicly and thank, you know, those two individuals publicly. Secondly, we're going to have possibly a archery field temporarily next to our rec center. We'll see that on a future council agenda item, just kind of prepping you that you'll see that. And then the lighting of our tower, which has the new lights, are coming up on, I believe, November 30 with that. I do want to pass this one thing to you, Mayor. I did have the opportunity to meet with County Attorney Bill Montgomery's office briefly. And with the recognition for I Run for Good and the dollars that are going to that particular cause, on January 16, there is a youth conference called Speak Up, Stand Up, and Save Life, Care Enough. And that's really focused on the suicide amongst our youth related to bullying, depression, drug addiction, and other things. They're going to approach you, Mayor, and ask you to do a proclamation. So I just wanted to say on January 16 of 2018, this conference, youth conference, is going to be available. With that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Cook. Any other?
Mayor, thank you. I don't know if we want to see this on a future meeting, but I'm getting more calls on the quiet zones. Am I the only one getting those recently? There seems to be more calls on that. Maybe it's just a status update, but, or a communication to staff, just keep going on that because that isn't moving as fast as I'd like it. But maybe a future agenda. What do you think, Mayor?
I would encourage you to point them in the direction of Kristen Myers. There's a robust CIP plan already underway to make sure that all the construction is being done so that when we are ready for a decision point as relates to quiet zones, we'll be able to make that determination. But there are several CIP projects that have to take place before we can make that decision. So that's where we're at. Yeah. Point them to Kristen Myers. She's not here at the moment, but she's great.
Taking a long time.
It's going to. It's not something that's going to happen.
I get it.
Thank you. Any, I think that was future meeting agenda items. Any others? Communications?
Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the different groups who had Veterans Day celebrations this last weekend. The town had a great event. We were all invited to different groups, and Valer Christian had an event as well that a number of us were at. But I wanted to say thank you to them for the invitation and for all those who put in so much time and effort for the different celebrations this week.
Thank you. We'd like to thank Jacob Ellis for being our acting town manager today. Do you have any current events that you'd like to update us on or communications?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Mayor, councilmembers, on behalf of Patrick Banjar, our town manager, I am pleased to provide an update on four items. First off, the Gilbert Office of Economic Development in cooperation with Partners in Progress hosted its third business walk yesterday in which OED representatives from council and volunteers met individually with local manufacturing businesses in the northwest corridor of Gilbert to gain feedback about their operations in the town. During the three-hour tour, more than 30 volunteers visited 90 businesses. It's very important, as we all know, to stay connected with these businesses as this area continues to grow, and the valuable face time with the business community continues to help us plan better and create policy to support their growth for the future. Mayor, as was mentioned earlier, the Gilbert Days festivities start tomorrow. We've got the 5K One Mile Run at Freestone Park that starts tomorrow morning at 4:30, I'm sorry, tomorrow at 4:30 p.m. The Gilbert Days Parade downtown Gilbert is this Saturday starting at 8:30 a.m., and the Gilbert Half Marathon is also this Saturday starting at 7:30 a.m. at Higley High School. Gilbert's Youth Fishing Day is coming up Saturday, December 2. This is a collaborative event between Gilbert Parks and Recreation and the Arizona Game and Fish Department, who will be on site with fishing equipment for the first 100 participants that don't have their own gear. This is a great opportunity to spend the morning fishing with family or to bring a young angler who would enjoy the experience. Again, that's Saturday, December 2, from 8 a.m. to noon at Freestone Park, and there is no charge to participate in that event. Finally, we are pleased to announce, and Rod Buchanan has pulled this up with a few photos, that we have two new playgrounds that have opened in town at John Allen and Villa Madera Parks. And Rod's just going to show you a few before and afters of what that project's done for our town.
Thank you, Jacob, and Mayor, members of council. Villa Madera Park was a neighborhood, is a neighborhood park. The playground was 20 years old. We, this is part of our long-range infrastructure plan, replacing these playgrounds on a priority basis. And they're both in neighborhood parks, and Councilmember Taylor will be happy to know that both of them have full shade covers. This is, a picture's worth a thousand words, so here's Villa Madera Park before, and here it is now. It offers two different levels and a bunch of really fun features, as well as a spinner, which is kind of a new feature we're trying out in our parks. John Allen Park is a neighborhood park, and this is 18 years old, located off Elliott Road, just west of Gilbert. And this one features a very large climbing structure, as well as spinner, and playground features that are interactive. And here's the pictures of that. And I invite you all to go out and see these great parks. Thank you.
Thanks, Rod. We'd also like to thank our Parks and CIP staff for a job well done on that project. Mayor, that concludes the manager's report on current events. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. I covered my current events at the beginning, and they've probably been discussed a few more times, which is good. We need all the reminders we can get about Gilbert Days and our road closures. So I don't have anything additional, anything additional from council. Thank you. We appreciate everyone's attendance tonight, and this meeting is adjourned.